This conference will now be recorded.
The time being 4:45 PM, I'd like to call a meeting of October 27th, 2022 to order. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, the free and public, religious saints, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Next on our agenda, we'd like to welcome representatives from Casella Waste Collection and Disposal. And we welcome you gentlemen up to the table.
Good afternoon, evening.
Good to see you again.
Yes.
So as you know, we're here tonight to just go over and talk about the agreement, our proposed changes, sort of where you see those lines, your questions about our proposed changes, et cetera.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so introduce myself, Brian Groschon, Market Area Manager for Casella. To my right here is Martin Galofsky. He is a Division Manager for Casella, currently visiting the region right now and came along with me tonight.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. So I had a couple of conversations with Tim prior to the conversation tonight, just to get some feedback from Tim on the changes that were represented in the agreement. I think one of the things that I would recommend is there's obviously some of the modifications that were brought back were at recommendations of your General Counsel. Typically, what I recommend in that situation is that Casella's General Counsel and the towns representing General Counsel have conversations over those modifications. I know that, just to kind of give feedback outside of Section 3, which is kind of the fees where I figured most of the conversation was going to land anyways. But the, our attorney accepted a lot of the changes. There's a couple other modifications that I think that our legal would like to have a conversation with your General Counsel regarding those changes. So if, and that was something I brought up to Tim. That's kind of my recommendation, just because I'm not a lawyer at the end of the day. And you know, there's obviously justification by both parties of why they feel like they want to add or change certain language. And it's probably best for them to kind of talk the legal language and get clarity on those and come to an agreement on, if that makes sense to the select board or select them.
Do you know what they are?
Uh, no, we.
Well, I'd like to know what they are.
Yeah, I mean, so I have the town's copy. I can walk through the updates and where maybe further conversation needs to be had. We can start there and then we'll jump back to Section 3, the fees with the fuel and the annual escalator, that those modesty changes, and we can talk through those, if that makes sense. Okay, so obviously, you know, our legal came back. It wasn't a change that you had, but just updating the date at the start of the agreement. Right now, it's representing September 15th, 2022. And updating it to whatever the data that, once we land on a final agreement is just updating that properly. If you were to turn to page three, it had a line said, "Casella comma applicable law, rule, and regulation." It was marked off, crossed off. Our attorney accepted that change. I'll skip Section 3, because we are going to go back to that. Page four, under Section 6, the, and recyclable materials. Our attorney, obviously, that was, I could have done that one. We accepted that change, because this is trash only. There is an additional, on page five now, turning to the, the towns representing counsel, added two sentences to the last paragraph at the top. That is something that our attorney wanted to have further discussion on. Jumping down, Section 9, power, raw materials, labor, and containers, crossed out. As far as exclusive performance, we accepted those changes, totally understand. Section 12, independent contractor. We accepted those changes. Jumping down, testing my Roman numeral, Section 18. Legal would have, like to have more discussion about rectifying situations or default of performance on that change from 30 to 15. Notices. Accepted everything. Oh, yeah, that's accepted. That whole notice is accepted. Sorry, jumping to Section 20, Casella Records, accept everything. Again, Section C, legal would like to have additional discussion. And obviously, accepted the signature page. So I think there's only one, two, three, yeah, three points that our counsel would just like to be able to have a conversation with your counsel, just to get clarification and have a conversation. So back to Section 3. I guess we'll start with the easy one, additional cart service. Talked to Tim. He gave me clarification on what the town's intent is moving forward, that the subscription program is, that concept is being dissolved and just moving forward with each resident having one cart.
Is that accepted?
Yes, accepted, sorry, yeah, yep. So Section 2, fuel adjustment. So talk through this with Tim. So when we generate a proposal or generate a price for collection, we have to use some sort of baseline fuel assumption. Our fuel assumption coming into this agreement was based on $4 a gallon, which was represented in our proposal exceptions about a fuel adjustment. So basically, the way it works is we take the previous three months data on our cost of fuel. And based on that average cost of fuel, if it was to exceed that $4 a gallon, say it went to, say, $4.25, there would be a 25 cent per gallon fuel surcharge that would be based on the number of gallons used for collection for just this town. So say we used 100 gallons, it would be a $20, $25 fuel surcharge. So Tim asked for me to get some data on what our, so it's actually our cost. So we buy in bulk. We don't go to Irving or anything like that. We buy in bulk. So in September, our average fuel cost was $3.61. In August, our average fuel cost was $3.87. And then in July, $3.75. You know, and so we use that, and again, we use, yep.
Did you say it, so it went down from August to September?
July to September, 1, 3, 75, 3, 87, 3, 61.
Yes, that is correct. Yep, yep. And so that's, and we, obviously, we would provide that data to the town and for them to understand what our, what our fuel cost was for that trailing three months. And again, that, that, that 30-day window slides. So it's, it's a moving window constantly. So every month, we're evaluating the previous three months. So obviously, once it falls below, then, you know, that, that fuel surcharge would, there would be no surcharge associated with it.
So from November, you look at August, September, October, that keeps.
Yes, that is correct. That is correct.
And you guys, I'm going to assume that you have to use ultra-low sulfur fuel.
Yes, yes. So, so as far as Casella is concerned, we would like to keep the $4 gallon language. Now, I will say that I talked to Tim. I mean, if the town wanted to create a bigger buffer and more predictability, we could consider increasing the threshold from $4 to $5. But what that would do is we would have to go back into our model and change that assumption, which I did. And so instead of the year one collections starting at 170, it would be 174.
So how many gallons are worked into the money?
Yep, so on a monthly basis, it's 438 gallons a month. And that's the other thing that we would be agreeable to, is if we wanted to include the number of gallons associated with this contract on an annual basis that we planned for. So it's total 5,262 gallons.
5,265 gallons over the course of the year.
Over the course of the year, so we would.
Roughly 100 gallons a week.
Yeah, it's about 50 gallons a day. Yep, that's correct. We're planning on a two-day route. Yep, yep, that's correct.
So just for the board's sake, one of the things that, that I was concerned about was that trying to express what had been discussed from the board with that through the contract and the economic risk that the town is taking. It seems as though we're taking the risk on the fuel. And then depending upon the discussion of the annual fee increase, we're also taking the risk on CPI for garbage collection. And, and I wasn't able to determine, but it seemed as though fuel is included in that Urban Consumer Price Index for garbage collection. So it kind of seemed to me that if you have a, an escalator for CPI, that also includes the fuel in it. So are we kind of potentially paying for fuel twice? So you're, you're charging us for a surcharge in per gallon, but then built into the CPI for urban collection is fuel?
Yeah, so, you know, I appreciate the comment, Tim. I totally understand your perspective. I think, you know, when jumping over into the annual escalator. So just to give a little bit more background there is, historically, what we've seen with a lot of our municipal contracts and contracts just in general, that the CPI language that we include into those agreements historically have never kept pace with the inflation that we're experiencing. And we're experiencing, obviously, this current index kind of based inflation, but as an industry in the Northeast, we're also experiencing a significant amount of market-based inflation. So when we looked at our language in referencing an annual increase, we tried to, the company tried to find something that kind of balanced both thresholds, you know, and, and at the end of the day, create something that we feel like will keep pace with the inflationary costs that we experience. One of the comments that I made to Tim is, we recently went through competitive bid processes with the city of Laconia and the town of Tilton. And, excuse me, town of Belmont, excuse me, my apologies. And what we, they ended up seeing a significant increase in their overall collection cost from their current agreement till now. And what I was stating to Tim is, at the end of the day, that's representative of our contract, just not keeping pace with the cost of performing that service. Our competitors provided very similar increases as well, if not actually more, because we needed to get, obtaining the work. And so I guess I give that out as, you know, this is why we're doing it, is we're just trying to keep ourselves whole throughout the entirety of an agreement. And, you know, based on that historical information, the company has landed on this to say, all right, on average, you know, we're, we're experiencing somewhere around a 5% increase. You know, we got to create that as a baseline. But as an industry, we're trying to use some sort of index. Is the Garbage and Trash Collection Index of the Bureau of Labor and Statistics perfect and representative of the Northeast? Not exactly, but it is a bit variable and kind of follows the flow of where our costs are going. And so you kind of tie the two both together to try to just keep that pace moving along in the right direction, to keep ourselves at pace with the cost increases that we're incurring.
That was a well, well, I'm saying what double dipping.
Well, so, so if I may, because I've given this a lot of thought. And stop me if someone else wants to jump in. But so I was thinking in terms of, right now, I think you said the CPI for urban garbage collection is around 5.3%.
Yeah, that's correct.
So that 0.3%, where we in December of '23, right now, looking at a reset of our pricing for January of '24, we'd be looking at about $4,500 or thereabouts, 0.3% on that. In other words, over and above the, the 5% increase. I guess what I'm getting at is, I could see that, that if, the two things. One is that, that if it, if the CPI was five or under, that the fuel charge, surcharge could be an anomaly, and you could be having higher fuel surcharges. And that we could, if the board were in agreement, we could pay for those fuel surcharges, but not both. So in other words, if it's over 5%, we don't pay the fuel surcharge, because we're in for that entire year at that, whatever rate that is, based on December of the prior year, because that's what it says for the reset period, for the pricing. So I guess what I'm saying is that, that if the CPI is under 5%, we're still going to be paying our 5% increase in the contract. But, but we would potentially agree to a fuel surcharge, but not if it's over 5% on the CPI. So in other words, you're, you're recouping for an entire year a fuel, a fuel increase in that CPI potentially. So in other words, if your labor costs, if your parts costs, if your, you know, rubber costs, whatever, you know, tires, you know, all that sort of stuff is, has escalated, we, we're going to be stuck with your pricing based on that last month. And that was, so that was my first comment about splitting them. In other words, if it's five or under, if we did the fuel surcharge, if it's over five, there's no fuel surcharge. The other thing is that you have a three-month period on the fuel of a kind of an average lookback. You know, we're, we would kind of be at the mercy of whatever the CPI is in December of the year, in December of the year prior to the renewal year. So in December of '23, whatever that CPI is, that's, you know, if it's over 5%, that's what we're going to be paying through the entire year of '24. Same thing in December of '24 for '25 and so on. So that's the other question I have is, why the most recent month prior to the date of pricing? Why not have more of an average, you know, towards the end? So like a two- or three-month average, say a fourth quarter average? Those are my two questions.
You're, Tim, you're saying on the CPI, taking the preceding three-month average on the.
Right, so if it spiked in December of '23, that's our price, according to this language, for all of '24. So if it comes in at 7%.
But that, that CPI is looking at the previous 12 months. It's a 12-month window that looked back.
I, I understand, but still, if it spikes during that time, you know, we're, we're stuck with, based on that December pricing, we're stuck with that price for the, the year of '24 or subsequent. So I guess that's what I'm, you know, the two things were, you know, to kind of get away from what we feel might be, you know, paying both in terms of a double dipping. If it's, if it's under 5%, if we pay the fuel surcharge, if it's over, we don't. And then also just looking at how that CPI would be calculated at the end. So we don't get stuck with some kind of anomaly. Because, I mean, if you look at the chart right now, it's, it has a pretty dramatic upswing from month to month over the last three months. You know, so that's, I guess that's what concerns.
Would you be closer to the microphone?
I'm sorry. I'm always canceling other people about.
I know you are. That just dawned on me, you're four feet away. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, Tim, if you can better explain that to me, the CPI, if it goes up and you take the average in December in CPI, we could virtually, not virtually, potentially increase it by $5,000 or better. And then if the gas spikes to better than 5% our surcharge, we could essentially increase our yearly by $10,000 or better. Is that what you're?
Kind of, yeah, yeah. So, so my point was that, that if, if we're, if we were accepting of the CPI language, and I would advocate for, you know, a multi-month average of that average, so kind of smoothing that average, that then we are in effect paying for the inflationary costs of garbage collection. So therefore, why would we be paying double? You know, if fuel's already included in the CPI for garbage collection. So, but if it's under that 5%, recognizing that maybe things have stabilized and yet there's, you know, geopolitical risk that drives oil prices up and our fuel prices are through the roof, that, that we would then be paying for that, although it wouldn't necessarily drive urban garbage collection over the 5%. I guess that's, I was just trying to find something that would work maybe both ways.
This is above and beyond the $170,000 that we would be paying.
Yeah.
All right, makes sense. Now I understand what you're saying.
Ryan, do you follow what?
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, just let me kind of back-brief you on what, what I'm hearing is that, one, with the CPI, you're looking to get more of, you know, obviously, come December, it's going to be looking at the preceding 12 months. But depending on what's occurring, you would rather have it look back, you know, take the average of maybe the three, last three months of that index. And that if it is above 5%, you're asking for us to, if that index is above 5%, you're asking that that would void out the ability for us to pursue the fuel surcharge. However, if it's below the 5%, it would allow us to use the fuel surcharge.
Okay. And, and I think that is somewhat fair. I mean, I think it accomplishes, you know, it spreads the, the economic risk to both parties.
Because, because as you're stating, the CPI would be covering the cost of fuel anyways. Because if you're looking at it that way, the CPI is taking into consideration the changes in fuel prices.
Understand, absolutely understand. I mean, that's, that's, that's not a decision I can make. From the, the company's perspective, I think that they look at the index separate of fuel. And again, trying to basically account for the two types of inflationary environments that we experience across the board, whether it is labor, anything associated with equipment, insurance costs, regulatory requirements, et cetera. You know, that is what we feel like is the best balance that we can bring to a customer and try to tie it and make it more accurate to the industry, right? We talk, you know, the CPI right now, all items is like 8.2%. So, you know, previous 12 months, whereas we're trying to just really finite this specifically to the industry, which is right now, preceding 12 months, 5.3%. And again, just trying to find that balance and keeping ourselves whole through the entirety of the agreement versus what I reflected with Laconia and Belmont. Essentially, we ended up going backwards, right? And the town benefited from it. For the same token, it's a real challenge for them now, because you're having to push such a significant increase that, you know, it's, it's a big jump, right?
They weren't, they didn't have a CPI escalator, did they? And they're.
They're, they're, yeah, they did.
They did.
They did, but it just never kept pace with where our costs have gone over the, the term of that agreement. Their current agreement is public information. It's, it's exactly what's laid out here. Their, their fuel clause and their CPI are what you see. So again, we're, listen, it's not a perfect world. I totally understand the environment we're under. We're all feeling it, right? We're all feeling it at home. I get it. It's not, it's not a fun conversation to have, you know? And again, I understand your perspective. I think I can take that back to, to my folks and see if that's something that we could massage and become agreeable to. Again, I understand the perspective, and I understand the challenges that every municipality is facing right now.
Those were just my comments, so I.
Yeah. So the board, can we agree with that, taking that back?
Yeah.
You can take that back.
We're with Tim.
Okay.
Numbers aren't my forte, though. I understand this stuff.
Yeah, I under, I understand his perspective, absolutely, so.
And to be candid, I mean, we, it's, as, as you acknowledge, this period, this inflationary period forever, it's really tough. Yeah. Yes, so.
So does the board also want me to send this contract over to John, I can know John Radigan, let him know that your attorney wants to talk to him about these three items in here?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that you should be part of it.
I would need.
Tell our team one of the other.
Need his name and phone number.
Yeah, I can get you that, contact you, no problem. We can set that up.
So yes, please.
And I think we'd like to try to get this done.
Yeah, I'll communicate to her tomorrow. And, you know, I'll reach out to you. And if you want to pass me the time, we can just set up a time. I don't know if you, I'm happy to jump on a call and let's put a call together. So at least you and I are on there too, and come back and kind of land in the same spot, if that works.
Yeah, I'm fine with part of that.
Do you don't want to crunch the numbers, do you?
He does it so much.
Yeah, yes, well, so good. Board, any other questions overall?
But just to be clear, I don't think the conversation between the attorneys is not about the numbers. It's just.
Yeah.
No, the conversation, the conversation about the attorneys is about those three sections, those three.
Brian's going to get back to Tim.
Yes.
About the other policies, the fees and things like that. And then you'll be able to work with that.
Yep.
Rest of, rest of the board will be good with Tim working on.
Yeah.
Yeah, section the CPI.
Right.
Super, anything else from us? Brian, thank you very.
Yeah, no, thank you for your time. Any other questions come up in the meantime? Again, please don't hesitate to reach out as we approach January 1.
Martin, thank you.
It was a pleasure to meet you all. Too many other.
Yeah.
It's a conversation.
It depends on where you are in New England, it may be a conversation ender.
I live there like 75% of my life.
Might wind up in one of those trucks.
Thank you very much.
I gotta say that, that was great.
Yeah, thank you for your work on that. So, and then the clarity, the expertise, the foundation that you just did helped me sort of, I mean, I got a gist of where you were coming from, but that really sort of gave, that really locked it in in terms of understanding that the CPI stuff and, as Pat said, there's, you know, it seemed like a little bit of double dipping could possibly occur with that.
That's really good.
Yeah.
I do have one question for you regarding that, when you go in.
Okay. Yeah, a question. On the CPI typically, and with trends, do they seem to change different throughout the year? Like, is December usually a spike time of year?
It doesn't look like seasonality is a factor for that one. Looking back over three years. for that one. Looking back over three years, there really isn't much of a seasonality change. But you can definitely see from the time that they provided the bid document until now, it's, it's gone up quite a bit, because it was about two-point-four, two-point-five percent, and historically, it's been around that, that range. And now it's five-point-three percent.
So if we have a spike in CPI in December, we're actually going to be, that will affect us. It would compound it the rest of the years, because we're already stuck with that up.
The way that's worked.
And then, and that's always right in February, December, if has a tendency to.
It didn't look that way, but this-
Somehow I knew we checked that.
Oh, yeah.
So before Tim puts that off, and because I had not checked my email at the end of the day, because I was teaching right up to the end of the day, and I had, I had a meeting right after. I had just asked by, I had asked folks, just in terms of the next piece, do we, that, that we're supposed to head into non-public for, do we feel that, that because there could be the potential of you know, promotion compensation, et cetera, with employee, that it should be held, that we should be doing the discussion in non-public? So.
Yeah, absolutely.
The animated, the, the letter to N M H A, and the H and A.
I missed something, because I didn't realize it was gonna be in non-public. Thought we were doing Casella, and that's why we had to have an emergency meeting.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think that if we go and do something in non-public, we can always release it later, so we get our side of caution.
Mr. Pyron?
I'm reading your email right now. I'm on the fence.
Is there anything about this non-public that can't wait till next week?
It would, I-
Yeah, we need the, we need the answer.
I think it would be pertinent to get the answer. So.
Need the answers to the questions that we posed last week.
Oh. Yeah, I get it. Well, we're already here, we should probably do it.
Just in case you-
Yeah.
Yeah. You think non-public? Yeah, Joe's on non-public, so that's three anyways. And so we'll, with three, and I can very honestly, because I posed a question, I, I wanted to remain neutral on that. So, okay, so we have, we have a majority that feels that it should go non-public, so. Do we need a motion on that? Yeah, so. So the time being, five nineteen PM, I make a motion to enter into non-public session per RSA ninety-one A three-two A. The dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her, unless the employee affected, one, has a right to a public meeting, and, two, request that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted.
Second.
Motion in the second, roll call, vote.
Constantino, yes.
Jessman, yes.
Ruggles, yes.
Pyron, no.
Scanlon, yes.
Motion passes.
This conference will now be recorded.